The Women of Achievement Bridge and then the two around Gray's Lake. And then a building in downtown Des Moines will also be lit up orange. But it started, there was a woman that was marching in Obama's inaugural parade. And then about a week later, she was killed by gun violence. And her friends did this, started this to honor her. And orange was her favorite color. And now orange is known as honoring gun violence survivors.
Here we go. So our proclamation reads as follows, and we have a guy taking pictures here in case you want one of those. So every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides each year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die of gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has 323 gun deaths every year at a rate of 11.2 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $23 billion each year, of which $45 million is paid by taxpayers. Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of the firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in just 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Des Moines, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see as increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim June 2, 2023 is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I encourage residents of the City of Des Moines to wear orange in recognition of victims of gun violence and to support the community's efforts to prevent the tragic deaths caused by gun violence. So thank you all for the work that you're doing. And I've got this. I don't know, but I think we may have a couple of public works people in here. And we'd like to have you all come up here, if you would. Okay, I'm gonna have you take a couple things. Okay. As everybody comes up, we have a National Public Works Week that is coming up. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jonathan Gano to talk a little bit about what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor County. Taking a moment out of our long, busy day to come in and hear the reading of the proclamation, the Public Works Department for the City of Des Moines is over 400 men and women that work 365 days a week, every single one of those days, 24 hours a day. You can reach a live person at the end of that garbage can, at the end of the phone number that's printed on every single one of the garbage cans, and someone will be there to answer your phone. We take care of the infrastructure and provide services to our community that are absolutely necessary to preserve the quality of life for our community. And we're more than just the Public Works Department. In the National Public Works Week, we also celebrate the contributions of our brothers and sisters in the engineering department. So there's over 500 men and women doing infrastructure work and services in your community every single week, every single day. And we want to take just a week during what's declared National Public Works Week and make a concerted effort to observe that and celebrate it. Thank you.
So our proclamation reads as follows, Public Works personnel operate and maintain infrastructure and provide services essential for everyday life and economic growth and also provide leadership in floods, snowstorms, and national disasters. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work services and maintenance programs such as traffic sanitation, sewers, streets, forestry, and wastewater reclamation. And whereas the protection and preservation of the area's natural resources for the benefit of future generations depends on the sustainability of these services and programs. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these functions, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works and engineering officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the departments of public works and engineering are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they provide. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of May 22 to 26, 2023 is National Public Works Week in the City of Des Moines. And I call on all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works and engineering officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Let's give all these people a great big hand. Jonathan, I'm gonna move this. You know, as they walk out, I want to say that we go down a couple of times a year, usually at the start of the spring and flood season, and thank these people for being ready to help us every single day. And then as the fall comes and potentially the snow season is on the way, they're out there 24 hours a day to try to keep our streets safe and clean so people can get to and from their places of work and their homes and do it in a safe manner. And these are the people that we depend on, and they do a great, great job. I want our public works and our director have been honored. And I would like to ask Jonathan to kind of go through what went into it and the what, the wheres, and the whys of the recognition that he and his department have recently received.
Sure, this is a personal award that was given to me by the American Public Works Association. Out of 30,000 members, every year since about 1960-something, the association has picked the top 10 public works leaders of the year for that given year. And I was honored to be selected as one of the top 10 leaders for this year in 2023. I successfully wrote up my boss in 2012. It was quite an undertaking, even more of an undertaking to do my own write-up, 20 pages of application, basically a career retrospective. And after a little bit of that, you realize, oh, enough already. Just cap it at 19 and ship it. So it was a tremendous honor, and I'm pleased to be able to share that with you.
And Des Moines just keeps getting these honors, from public works to parks to so many other things. And we're proud of it, and we're proud of our citizens. And an awful lot of everything that we do here is because of the work that this council does and the input that we receive from our citizens about what's wrong, what's right, what do we need to work on together? How do we improve everything from our parks to our streets to our sidewalks, to our sewer to protect everybody from flooding? And it's that input that's so helpful to us as we make a strategic plan to carry out those actions that will deliver what we hope to be the city that we all hope to live in ourselves and for generations to come after us. So congratulations, the city. We do have. And is there anybody here for, I think, yes, come on forward. But you by yourself. So this is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I'd quickly like to have one of our citizens and members of our civil human rights to make a couple of points and tell us what's going on, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Hello, my name is Hector. I'm one of the members of the LGBTQ+ Advisory Council. To honor Pride Month and to show that Des Moines acknowledges the LGBTQ+ community, the 2023 Pride Flag raising will be next Wednesday, the 31st, at 3:00 p.m. at the east entrance of City Home. We hope that Des Moines continues to see us and accept us. An early happy Pride to you, LGBTQ+ members and allies. Thank you.
So the proclamation reads as follows, Our nation was founded on the principles of equal rights for all people. But the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many people. And whereas the City of Des Moines has a diverse population of LGBTQ+ individuals and is committed to ensuring their visibility, dignity, and justice. And since 1978, the LGBTQ community of Des Moines has annually celebrated Pride Month in the month of June, honoring the fight for equality for the LGBTQ+ community and the progress made each year. And whereas everyone should be able to live and thrive without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on their gender identity and/or sexual orientation. And whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equal treatment of LGBTQ people throughout the country, but there continues to be an opposition against them. And whereas as elected representatives of the residents of Des Moines, including members of the LGBTQ+ community, we support, affirm, and are committed to the protection of the civil rights in the LGBTQ community, as well as their continued advancement and value in our community. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council and residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. And I want to thank you for your work. We'll get our council meeting started and just. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting for May 22, 2023. Let's note that it's about 5:02, and we're gonna open the meeting and call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please take a roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Item 28 was updated, roll call and communication number 23-270. And 38 was withdrawn by the legal department.
Move approval.
Second.
There is, by the way, an extra item approving the retention of Brent Henders with Hopkins and Hubner P.C. as outside counsel due to a conflict of interest, and I sponsored it.
Move approval with the extra item, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
All right. Been approved and seconded, ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
All right, item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 51. Item 5, I vote no. And item 19, Councilmember Westergaard wishes to speak.
Move approval.
A second.
Been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
All right. That takes us to item 52, which is our first hearing item. Again, as a reminder, for the zoning items, which is item 52 tonight, we will hear from the parties in interest. That's either the applicant for the rezoning or the persons who live within 250 feet of that site and have received a notice from the city about that. All other parties will ask you to stand down until those parties in interest have spoken. And at the conclusion of that, we'll ask the other interested parties to step forward to the microphone. But please do not step forward until you are called upon. And at first, only the parties in interest. And if someone comes and approaches the mic before their time and you're not on the list, unfortunately, we'll have to say you're disruptive and ask you to not only not speak, but ask you to leave for the remainder of the meeting. For the five urban renewal plan amendment hearings, any interested person may make germane comments or not to exceed one minute per person until comments cease or unless the hearing is ended sooner for a failure to make germane public comments. For all other hearing items this evening, any interested person may make germane comments and to a maximum of five minutes and one minute per person unless the hearing again is ended sooner for either a failure to make germane comments or there's no one who wants to make comment on the item. Any rate, let's get started with item 52. And let's note that it's five minutes after the hour of five. Item 52 is on a city-initiated request to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business park and industrial to low-density residential parks and open space and public semi-public and to rezoned properties in an area generally located north of Murray Street, east of Southeast 25th Street, south of East Market Street, and west of Southeast 30th Street from EX mixed-use district and I-1 industrial district to N3C neighborhood district. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. And again, we're gonna ask, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or those who live within that 250 feet of the property to be rezoned? Is there anybody here? All right, seeing none. Counsel?
Yeah, Your Honor, real quick, Pastor Steve Carter, he is a representative of the Bread of Life Ministries, 2727 East Railroad. He asked me to read a statement. My grandfather and father lived and raised our family in the Chesterfield area for over 50 years. This is why we chose to build a multi-facility in the area for community use over 17 years ago. We are committed to continuing educational programs, food distribution, as well as mentoring programs. We are in agreement for the rezoning plan the city council is proposing. We look forward to creating a partnership with you as we continue to partner with other private agencies and businesses. So this is the message I've been receiving. I'm happy to move item 52, 52A, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I will waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Is there anyone in the general public who would like to speak? Seeing none, been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 53 is on a proposed 11th amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number 23-240. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone want to speak about the amendment to the urban renewal plan?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 53.
A second.
Six yes.
Item 54 is on a proposed 32nd amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Metro Center Urban Renewal Area. Again, Council Communication Number 23-242. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone wish to speak on this urban renewal plan? Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 54.
Item 54 has been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 55 is on the proposed 4th amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Merle Hay Commercial Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number 23-241. Again, let's open it up for germane comments regarding that urban renewal plan around Merle Hay.
Seeing none, I'll move item 55.
Second.
Item 55 has been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 56 on the proposed 6th amendment to the urban renewal plan for the South Side Economic Development District Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number 23-244. Again, let's open it up. Any comments from the general public regarding the 6th amendment to the urban renewal plan for the South Side Economic Development District?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move item 56.
Been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 57 is on the proposed 14th amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Southeast Agribusiness Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication Number 23-243. Again, let's ask the general public if they have any comments regarding this urban renewal plan for the agribusiness area.
I see none, Your Honor, I'll move item 57.
I'll second.
All right, been moved and seconded, ask everyone to vote.
Six yes.
Item 58 is on the Riverview restroom facility, a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Monroe Construction Company. Patrick T. Monroe is the president, $570,000. Council Communication 23-253A is approval of the contract and bond. And again, let's open it up for general public who can make comments on this particular item, on the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, and the lower bidder designation are the only things that are germane. Would anybody like to do that regarding the restroom at Riverview? Step up.
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 Third Street, which is not very far from this park. I am so glad to see this coming to fruition. I remember way back when we started all of this for Riverview. And I really want to see Riverview become a destination and not just a park in this town. I think it's money well spent, and thank you for all the hard work that has gone into doing this. My kids love that park, or my grandkids do.
Thank you. All right, you want to move?
I would like to move, but I would like to make just a couple of quick comments. First of all, we have a lot of people to thank for making this possible. Polk County partnered, they came in and they put in the roundabout at the park entrance. So now instead of gravel, we have hard surface. So if you're handicapped, you'll now have a handicap spot, and it's easily accessible. We also have a million-dollar playground at the park that Variety Club paid for and installed in the park force. And this restroom, I'm happy to announce, will have adult changing tables. So people that come to the park, it doesn't matter what your ability is, you can enjoy the park and enjoy the playground area. And these restrooms will have adult areas where they can have changing tables for adults. So thanks to Ben Page and to others, I'm just really pleased that we have this.
Can I ask a question about the bathrooms?
I'll move item 58.
Can I ask a question about the bathrooms before we move this?
I just moved it.
Oh, will it be gender neutral?
Bathrooms will be individual.
Individual.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ask everybody to vote. Project well done and glad it's moving on.
Six yes.
Item 59 is on the Southwest 63rd Street resourcing from Willow Creek Drive to Dead End North, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as OMG Midwest Inc., doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving. Kevin Bragg is the president, $264,096.20. Council Communication Number 23-248A is the approval of the contract and bond. And again, let's open up the general public who can make comments regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 59 and 59A.
Second.
Moved and seconded, everybody vote.
Six yes.
All right, let's note that the hearings ended at 5:15. That takes us back to item 19. Item 19 is a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a request from the Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. Ryan Doyle is the officer for review and approval of a preliminary habitat for East 46th Street to allow for the development of 15 one-household residential lots on property located at 4320 East 46th Street. Councilmember Westergaard.
Thank you. And before I move forward with my comments, I would like to ask my fellow council members to allow us to have a speaker regarding item 19. I know we don't usually do that, but it has been confirmed from city staff that when this house...
how, this hearing was held at the, at the Plan and Zoning Commission, the property owners right next door, the Smiths, were not notified. And I, I have talked to several people, and that is a known issue that we have with getting notices out. And so for that reason, I'm asking that we allow them to speak tonight and then to have a response from Habitat since they didn't get to do that at Plan and Zoning. So I don't know if that takes a vote?
Move approval. Move approval to allow someone to speak.
You got a second? Home in favor say aye. Any opposition? All right, let's ask the individual to step forward.
I'd like to thank the council for letting me talk tonight. I really do appreciate it.
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Lawson Smith, 4280 East 46th Street here in Des Moines. And as Councilman Westergaard said, we didn't get the notice of the meeting and everything. But what I'm asking you folks to do is to request, request approval of the stub street and city utilities to the 2.88 parcel to the south of the Habitat for Humanity project. This property came up before the commission back in 2019. And at that time, the City Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment both recommended approval of a stub street to the, to the development, you know, that is in back of us. And do they have one of those things where you can see pictures, a projector?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, if you set it right here.
Oh, you can? Right there?
Yep, right there.
Do you have a picture?
Right kind of in this area there.
I was just going to show.
Okay. The land? I don't know. Let's see if we can put it on.
You have to get sort of an angle on it.
Yeah, tilt it. There's a glare. There we go. There you go. That's perfect.
That's the entrance from our property to the Habitat for Humanity project. now, I know Habitat for Humanity has helped many people achieve homeownership. And I, we can understand their need to, you know, make as much money as possible from their investment. However, on the other hand, they're saving a great deal of money, too. All the 15 homes are being built by sweat equity and with no basements. And a great deal of money is saved by not having to dig out and reinforce basements and walls. And all they need to do is lay a slab and then start building. And the homeowners themselves will be doing a lot of this sweat equity in order to work on their own homes and the homes of other people in the area. And for those who can't do physical work, like maybe me, they can work in the company's store. Habitat has about 11,000 volunteers and builds about 25 to 30 houses a year. They receive donations from local, state, and federal resources. Now, Habitat says we have access to the property from East 44th Street. You know, they're saying we already have access. But that access is not really an access. It's a city-owned right-of-way. There's another picture of it. It's a 60-foot wide by 300-foot in length, and the property is maintained by the owners on either side of it. Now, when they say access, that's the right of the ability to approach, enter, or use. That's why this is a right-of-way, because it doesn't give the right to pass over someone else's land. So a street would have to be built here, and then it'd have to cut through the trees that are there, that have been there for the last 60 years. So currently, there is no access. And another thing about it, they were saying in this year's committee meeting in 2023, that any future development to the south on our property would need a connection to the elementary school right directly across from Habitat's. But if you go through that access or the right-of-way, you come out on East 44th Street, there are no sidewalks, and the, the land comes down and goes into a ditch and then comes up to the street. There's no street lighting because all of this was built before this, we were incorporated into the city. The people would have to come down East 44th Street, go to Aurora, and then cross up, again, with no sidewalks anywhere in this. now, I know what they were saying, they didn't want to build this stub street because it would take away one of the properties that they were looking at. But the, but the properties that they're wanting to show, okay? The property number five is the one that they would be using for the stub street. That's 5,492 feet. That's the smallest square footage for a home in, in the 15 lots. And property number six has 12,144 square feet, and property seven has 13,176 feet. And I was just doing some math. If you take 5,500, which is the square footage of lot number five, and divide it between those two larger ones, it would be, property number six would have 9,394 square feet, and property seven would have 10,426 square feet. More than enough, even more than what property number five has. And so by doing that, you could make, you could still have the 15 lots, and, and you would still have a 16th lot for the stub street. And at the committee meeting this year, I think it was Mr. Droste, he made the comment to the, to the commissioner, at the meeting, that the stub street would also serve as a sidewalk to any future people at our property could come, you know, right up there and you have, you know, sidewalk right to the street, or I mean, right to the school across the street. Because otherwise, there is no access. You'd have to go all the way around here with no sidewalk.
Mr. Manager, would you want to either have staff? I don't know that we're all qualified to be engineers and decide exactly how this should lay out. I know that you, maybe you had staff take a look at this?
I think I have it right here.
Where should we go?
I did have a bigger drawing.
I understand, but...
Yeah, we should, we can maybe hear the, the full testimony here and, and understand that the size of the lot, yeah, as you've shown here, it doesn't necessarily help. You're going to have larger lots, no matter what, at the end of the cul-de-sac. And so there's still going to be a need to take a lot, most likely, to the south off of that cul-de-sac. So it's going to be very difficult to not take at least one lot, because you still have to have so much frontage on the cul-de-sac. The reason for those lots having so much extra square footage is at the back of the lot, that you can see on the west side of this, this plat.
Okay.
So the issue seems to be about sidewalks?
That is one, one of the issues, yes.
Okay, I mean, is there any way to poke a sidewalk through to get to the school?
Well, yeah, I don't think, I don't think sidewalks are really, are really the issue. I mean, those kids are getting to school now. I don't know if they're bussed or how, how, I don't know how their transportation is at Southeast folk schools. I mean, they're not using that area now to get to school because it's, it's private property. It's owned by the Smiths. So nobody's using that now to, to get there. So coming through wouldn't, it wouldn't make any difference.
I think the issue is for future development of that site, which I don't know that you need to build the sidewalk now, but I mean, if there could be an easement through the cul-de-sac.
I'm, I don't think anybody, I, I'd like for Lance to, to be able to input this. People have tried to buy that land from the Smiths in the past, but there's no utilities. You would have to come in. I've always been told that you would have to come in from the other direction, from 44th, but Lance is, is much more qualified than I am. But I can't imagine that that, that, that piece of land that the Smiths own would ever be developed because there's no utilities. There's, there are no utilities. There's nothing there. It would have to come in along ways. Habitat's already having to bring in the sewer just to make their piece work from the, in front of Delaware School, several hundred feet to come in to do this. So they're putting, they're putting infrastructure in here at a, at a very large expense just to make this happen. To, to, to put a street here in lot five for future development, I think we're putting a street in for something that will never happen. It's never happened yet, and I, I don't think it's, you'd have to hear from the engineers. Lance knows more about it than I do, but there's no infrastructure. There's nothing there.
So are most people on septic in this?
They're all, they're all on septic there.
If, if I could add, just Mayor, there's not a need to, to resolve this tonight. We need to hear the testimony. This is a preliminary plat. And so there's still work to be done. And so we wanted to make you aware, give them the opportunity to, to provide this testimony, and then continue working with, with Habitat, if, if there is even an option to combine these projects, so to speak.
Well, it sounds like they ought to work with the other landowner, too, and say, here's what's going to happen. You've got one shot here.
Yeah, and, and that's been tried, but that's between Habitat and the property owner. So, thank you.
Habitat and us, or? I don't understand.
The only option is, is if you were, if you wanted to sell it, you would have to talk to Habitat. I know Neighborhood Finance has also talked to you, and you said, yeah, you'd maybe be interested in selling, but you had no price for it. So I, I think, I think we're a little late to the game to get somebody to develop this right now.
So you don't feel we can get the stub street?
Well, it depends on what the council votes on.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, we're only here to approve the preliminary plat. So my motion tonight will be to approve the preliminary plat that was approved by Plan and Zoning. And that does not include the stub street.
Okay, so it doesn't include the stub street?
It does not. That's the preliminary plat. Now, there's still a lot of work to do. There's still things that can be worked out, but our job tonight is just to approve this preliminary plat. It's not to, it's not to vote whether there's a sub, a stub street or not a substrate. We're just approving the plat that was approved by Plan and Zoning.
So what do we do now?
That would be between you and, and whoever wants to buy the land. You could have conversations with anybody that you would like about, about purchasing it. That's not something that we have any involvement in.
But if you're going to sell it, it sounds to me like you need access for utilities and a street. So it, sooner rather than later, come to the table and see what you can work out.
So has...
Do we, do we want to hear from Lance or not? Do we need?
Did you finish, Lance?
There, there's still opportunity to work with Habitat.
There's still opportunity.
There's still opportunity to work with city staff.
And there's, there's still opportunity to come in through their property, too. They've got, they've got several other access other than through this Habitat.
So this is just the original?
I, I guess I don't understand what we're, we're supposed to do now.
I, I don't have an answer for you, other than if you're interested in visiting with Habitat, you could certainly talk to them, you could talk to other developers, but it may be that it would be, have to come in access through your property because you own the property in front of it. So that would provide access to that. So it's not really landlocked. You could come in through there, and then the city has the stub on the other side that would be for a future street.
But then we'd have to take the house out to do something like that. It isn't that wide.
That, I, I, that's, I don't know.
So because we missed the initial one, it's too late now?
Well, I don't think you missed anything. This is your opportunity. Plan and Zoning approved the preliminary plat as it was presented, and the motion that I'll make tonight will be to, to approve that preliminary plat. That's a preliminary plat. There's still a lot of work to do. And that's between city staff, Habitat, whoever else is involved.
So it, it doesn't include us, right?
It's up to you. So if, if I could, Councilmember, it's really up to you to decide as the property owner if you want to get involved in developing your property now with Habitat, or if you want to wait and use that street that would have to be built along 44th to give access to your property. So you have the choice of waiting and only using that access or working with Habitat today to, to work through one of their lots.
Okay. I would like for Lance to, just so you can hear it, but maybe we don't, you don't want to, do you want to allow that? Do you not want to allow that? Come on up, Lance. I would like for Lance, I would just like for Lance to...
We've already approved it. Yeah, go ahead.
Lance Henning, Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, 2200 East Euclid. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers for allowing me to speak a moment here. So the, the project is 15 single-family houses that are laid out on 50-foot lots and a cul-de-sac. So property on East 46, Delaware Elementary, and then the property that is just immediately to the south there, and that's the, the piece we were talking about. the 15 units with the cul-de-sac. Just one, Habitat for Humanity, we are a nonprofit, trying to build houses with workforce housing and low-income families across the community, also do major repairs and do homebuyer counseling and financial education. The, at the planning, zoning, also, I think, I believe that in 2019, Planning and Zoning approved the cul-de-sac as well as it was going through on there. Staff did recommend the street stub, and then Planning and Zoning, this last round, approved what was proposed by Habitat on here. I think a couple of key pieces that we want to make sure we highlight on there, that we would probably lose at least one lot, possibly two lots, if the street stub goes in, which makes the finances difficult on being able to put this together on here, that we went back and re-engineered after some conversations with city staff following the planning and zoning to try to take a look at how we could fit and have the street stub. And they laid out, there might be a possibility of 14, but then we're going to need additional variances on setbacks and the house plan probably, for, for four of the lots, the house plans probably would not fit. And then the property to the south, that there is the access coming out of that East 44th. 44th, and there could be a, there could be an opportunity where you could come off of East 46 there through the property there, too, is possibilities. There's challenges on developing that south property, both water and stormwater are significant challenges, being able to do that. One thing on the access to utilities, what we did agree with on planning and zoning is that we would do an easement so that the sewer could connect through there as part of that, being able to do that project on there, so.
Have the question related to the issue came through, hypothetically, if that south plot was developed in the future, and there are kids who live there and going to Delaware School, it would, I think, be helpful to have some sort of sidewalk access to the cul-de-sac so they could just walk that block rather than walk all the way around. Is that, is that something?
It seems like we could tie that to, if we could do that on top of the sewer easement.
Right.
That would be something that would be doable on there. I think we'd probably ask that somehow that's set up, so only if that gets developed that we'd have to put that in.
I think that would be fine. It's just an example of the type of thing that we should be thinking about today, so that if this happens sometime in the future, we're planning for the best possible access.
Yeah, I think we'd be glad to work on something like that.
Yeah, basically, it's a lot less of road. But it would give access, if it is able to be developed, but the terrain, it sounds like, is a little more difficult there than the other spot?
Yeah, there's definitely some challenges on trying to develop it, on how to, the water coming through, Water Works indicated that they would want that to loop, which means you'd have to go down to northeast 44th and connect up to northeast 46th, and that the water line is not adequate coming up northeast 44th, and so that you would have to take the water line all the way down to Aurora. So the, if we put a street stub in there, the impact on the Habitat proposed development's at least $180,000. That's what you can actually write down today, and I think there's probably some other unseen costs of doing that. And then to develop single-family in the south side lot on there, depending on if you had to put that road on northeast 44th in or not, the lots would work out to somewhere between 110 and $180,000 per lot. So, 160,000, 110 to 160,000 dollars per lot. So there's some significant costs there in being able to do something like that.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right.
With that said, I will move item 19.
I'll second.
Item 19's been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
All right, that takes us back to item 60. Item 60 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 23-254A is a code correction. Cambridge Street between East Euclid Avenue and East Douglas Avenue. B is a parking modification, East Sheridan Avenue between Sampson Street and Glenbrook Drive. C is a parking modification, Park Avenue between Southwest 24th Street and Southwest 29th Street. D is a parking modification, Watchers Avenue between Flewer Drive and Southwest 26th Street. E is a parking modification, Lower Beaver Road between Madison Avenue and Shawnee Place. F is a corner clearance parking restriction. One of them is at 17th Street and Clark Street. Two is 36th Street and Cottage Grove Avenue. And three is 53rd Street and Uved. And I believe that's it. Any comments, council?
No, Your Honor, I'll move 60A through F, 1, 2, and 3. It's Rule 42A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded?
Six, yes.
Item 61 is amending Chapter 2 of the municipal code relating to elections. Final consideration, the ordinance above the way was requested by Scott Sanders, our city manager, and requires six votes. Any thoughts or comments regarding the elections?
Move 61, 61A.
Second.
All right, our next piece is request to speak from some of our residents. The public speaking items for, again, for our citizens speaking this evening. Under the public speaking item, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized. Each of the three speakers this evening will receive two minutes each to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the end of the time, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker, mic will be closed, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We want to hear from our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints and comments, and even if they have different ideas from their own. Let's go ahead and get started. Our first speaker this evening is Bridget Botkin.
So I can't help but notice that Linda cares a lot about hearing from her constituents. That's genuinely awesome. But I'm a little confused as to why she, nor any of you, will support a virtual meeting model like in Iowa City. I think it's genuinely really funny that council is always more than ready to tout everything they've accomplished at the drop of a hat, but when they are presented with a simple logistical problem like virtual meetings, it somehow becomes an impossible request. How embarrassing for you all to be so scared of us. I'm not very threatening. The policy of my campaign has been revolving around a big but simple question. Who is the city for? We assume it's for everyone, but it's become increasingly evident, based on how much council loves to punish the residents of the city for exercising our rights to assemble and dissent, that that is not the case. I also can't help but note that in 2020, the council emphatically repeated that it exists to conduct the city's business. Yet nowadays, it's often referred to as the council's business. That's really strange to me. Perhaps, though, instead of asking who the city is for, we can ask how to ensure that the right to urban life is respected, or better yet, whose rights to urban life are respected? If you can't afford to live in the city you're in, is your right to urban life being respected? If you can't move freely around the city without police harassment, is your right to urban life being respected? If you can't get around because the city neglects its public transportation system, is your right to urban life being respected? If you can't get to a grocery store, or a clinic, or a pharmacy in a reasonable amount of time because there just aren't anywhere you live, is your right to urban life being respected? If you pay local taxes and get nothing in return in the way of services because the city wants to spend that money on more weapons for more cops, is your right to urban life being respected? If everything you do in the city is measured, observed, and analyzed so it can be optimized and made profitable, is your right to urban life being respected? If you can't even express your frustration at the above through proper channels because your city council refuses to meet at a time that's convenient for working people that they would rather ignore, is your right to urban life being respected? No is the answer.
Next speaker, Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, Ward Three, and trigger warning, we'll be talking about some police violence. At the start of this meeting, Mayor County read a Pride Month proclamation. I wanted to note, in hearing that, I wanted to note that DMPD raided a gay bar during Pride Month in 2020, seemingly for offering first aid to protesters. And unless I've missed an update from the courts, the city is still fighting the victims of that raid in court years later. Also wanted to note that a last-minute was item, last-minute item was added late to this meeting's agenda without context at first. I'm just saying it was hiring outside of council due to a conflict of interest, which means city is hiring private lawyers instead of using its own for something. I have not seen any explanation of what the conflict is provided. Even now, this morning, the day of the meeting, there was more context added to this item, but still, unless I missed something, which is possible because it was added very late, there's been no explanation of what conflict is being dealt with there. But this item, turns out that it's to defend DMPD officers in the city, but including DMPD Officer Thomas Garcia. Thomas Garcia was involved in the shooting of a 16-year-old child in December. Years back, Garcia was also caught on video entering protesters' apartment building to arrest protesters back in 2020. I just think this is horrendous, and also just horrendous that the city does these things last minute and doesn't release information about them. Similarly, tomorrow, there's a work session that the agenda said it's for governance. I don't know what governance means. Every meeting the city has is to do with governance. So to me, this seems to violate the Iowa Open Meetings Law. I don't know what your meeting's about tomorrow, but you're supposed to announce that at least 24 hours before the meeting. Anyway, thank you.
Next speaker, Frank Ingersoll.
Evening. My name is Frank Ingersoll, 2730 East Jefferson. That, I think you are familiar with this. This is Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan, second draft. I've read it, and I've analyzed it. That is not my main point. It says here, Vision Zero, zero deaths by 2014. Okay. I'm going to start with this. I've been in Des Moines 44 years. Raised my family, my children have moved away, I have grandkids. I'm a veteran. I've ran, I've walked, I've rode bicycle, I've rode motorcycle. I was run off the road by a motorcycle. People in cars don't really see walkers, bicyclists, or motorcycle people. They're looking for a different thing. Unfortunately, that's the case. The history, 44 years ago, downtown, it was hard to get around downtown, it really was, as me as a stranger. So the traffic was difficult, and so now, there were about 400,000 people back then in the greater Des Moines area. Now there's about, what do I know, 800,000 people in the greater Des Moines area, within 25 miles of here. In addition to that, there's a million people that come to the fair or more. There are people coming to Des Moines all the time. The fair goes on all year round, there's always something going out there. We have strangers and Iowans coming, we have people from all over the country. The interstates bring people to Des Moines. My point is this, we are not getting smaller. We are getting bigger. And so this is an action plan for zero deaths by 2040. Here's my action plan. Forget that.
Could you give it to us? Your time is up.
I, you know, I'm 74. I came up here to speak to the council, not in two minutes, but to finish my thought here. Could I do that, please?
You have more than two minutes to speak. It's unfair.
Roll up.
I was defending you, but okay. You should get more time to speak.
What we should do is this, take the money, the planet for police, that we give them police, that we...
We're going to have to shut off the microphone. I'm sorry, Mr. Ingersoll, you could make another reservation to come down again.
You're not really sorry. It's sad, and I'm a Christian, and in the Bible it says, "Pervaded people are not part of the program."
I'll move items 62A, B, and C to receive and file.
Been moved and seconded?
Six, yes.
We have one extra item this evening. It's approving the retention of Brent Henders with Hopkins and Hubner, PC, as an outside counsel due to a conflict of interest, and I sponsored that.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
All right, with that, could we have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please hit adjourn.